Good evening. I'd like to call to order the August 12, 2009 Planning Commission meeting. Let the record show that all members are present. And at this time, I'd like to personally thank Paige Becknow for her service to this commission. She will be sorely missed. Added a lot of good comments and good insight to this commission, and we wish her well. All right. Acceptance of the minutes from the July 8 Planning Commission meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Michael Marshawn, second by Buddy. Any opposition? Motion carries. Acceptance of the minutes from the Joint Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of July 8.
Motion.
Motion by Michael Marshawn, second by Buddy Wells. Any opposition? Motion carries. This time, I'd like to open up the floor for public comment. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on any item not on the agenda, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. Ricky, you want to comment on something?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a quick announcement. With the support of the Ascension Parish Recreation Department, we have started a youth co-ed flag football league for boys and girls ages five to 12. We're trying to get the word out anywhere and everywhere that we can. We putting posters up all over the parish. So if there's any parents out there that are interested, you can log into ascensionparish.net and go to our recreation page for all the details. Thanks.
Thank you, Ricky. Anyone else? Okay, public comment period is closed. Item number six, public hearing to consider the following family partition. The Hardy Kelly property tracks A2A3 and A2A4.
James Fagou, Earls &amp; Associates, representing Mr. Joshua Holton and Mr. Hardy Kelly on the following family partition. Asking the commission for approval.
Have you increased the size of that servitude?
No, we didn't. It was existing, existing 30. I don't know if you rode out there. It's a pretty good, easy road. It's not well traveled. There's not many people using it, so they want to keep it. They request them to keep it at 30-foot servitude.
But the code requires it to be 60 feet. So if you, you know, I mean...
I think it should be 50 feet, huh?
No, you have, we counted, there's eight residences being serviced by that road, so it should be 60 feet.
60 feet.
I mean, the code requires it. I mean, it's black and white.
Well, the minimum, I think it's 30 feet at any time. The minimum you often reduce it to is 30.
But that has to do with the number of lots, too, though.
Yeah. Well, that's all we got to do is add 15 feet on each side. Not a problem.
Your clients willing to make that change, willing to do that?
I can ask them. They won't accept it. You will.
Come to the mic. Introduce yourself, please.
Eric Kelly. Live on the road, on the property. It's family land. We always plan it to be that way. Of course, I know y'all have, you know, y'all's new rules and regulations. But it's 30-foot servitude. We maintain the road. We built the road. We maintain it with gravel. You know, even the school buses don't go back there, anything of that nature. So, you know, we were hoping to keep it at 30-foot servitude. Is basically what we're looking at there.
But it's not a matter of hope and desire. It's a matter of what the code requires. And what the code says is that if you can have that many residences, then the minimum is 60 feet. So in order to have more lots or more residences, you need to comply with the regulations.
Well, where's the eight residents come in at? I'm not...
Well, we drove up the road, and we counted driveways. And we counted eight.
There's...
The front house is accessing the property through 933.
No, the front house has a driveway off this little road.
It does, but we put that in for the mail service, basically, so that they can make their loop there.
We can just go by the code. It says over six residences using the road, it has to be 60 feet.
So, I mean, I understand things are black and, you know, so it's black and white. There's no gray, pretty much is what you're saying?
If it were a little closer, it would be gray, but it's not.
Just because it's six instead of...
You only have half the distance.
It's not very gray when it comes to roads.
And what's the reasoning behind the 60-foot? What is it?
That's what the code says.
Okay, but I mean, is there a reason behind the code? In other words, what makes it go to a 60-foot standard servitude instead of the third?
Well, one thing is getting emergency equipment back there. That's one reason. Now, that's not by far the only reason.
Staff, can you elaborate on that?
The position that we took when the code was revised is that in 100 years, your family may not own that property. And so if somebody comes to us and wants to add lots where we can require a widened servitude, if that road ever does become public, we don't want to have to go back and buy right-of-way, because you came through this process. We can require that servitude to be widened. Regardless of who lives there today, and I understand it's family property, all we're asking is for that ability in 100 years. If we have to make that a public road, we have the right-of-way there to do it.
Okay, but I guess my, what I don't understand there is that if, say, we ever sold the property, right, you'd have to go through all this again, and then you'd get yourself...
No, you don't. No, you don't.
No, you wouldn't?
You can tomorrow sell your land to somebody else, and that person could come to the parish and say, you know, "My neighbors aren't taking care of the road anymore. I need you to come take care of my access." You know, all of a sudden, there is no public means to take care of that road. And then there's a problem with access, and there's a problem with emergency vehicles and what have you. So we can't make a decision solely based on today's current ownership. We have to make it based on the presumption that any public could own any piece of property, because you can't take it out of market.
And the code has to apply to everyone. We can't give exceptions. The code has to apply to everyone.
Okay.
So you need to answer James' question. Are you willing to make that change?
I mean, I would. We'll have to. Yeah, that's what we got to do. I mean, if not, you're going to deny him, you know, his place to stay back there, I'm assuming, right? Is that what you're saying?
We would den... I don't know. I don't know.
Well, let me put it to you this way. The code would prevent us from approving that, because the code's black and white, requires that standard. So either we meet the standard, where we can conceivably approve it, or we don't meet the standard. In which case, my question to staff is, why is it even before us, since it doesn't meet the standard?
Well, because we, I had talked, actually talked to some people, and they had kind of directed me to say, okay, well, you know, if you don't have school buses going back there, it's just residential. Y'all maintain the road. You keep it up. You know, being a school bus going back there and needing to turn around, more room to pass, stuff like that, we could understand it. But since it's all private, you know, privately used, there is no need for the public back there, basically. So that's why. I was kind of directed that. We thought that maybe, you know, being that the case, we could go with just a normal 30-foot servitude that we already have in place. You know, I mean, we maintain it and so forth and so on, so that's kind of why we did this.
Any other questions, comments? At this time, I'd open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and comment? No one wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed. Any other questions, comments? Is there a bridge over the bayou right now? What's the structure there?
Culbert.
Culbert?
Two.
What? Could you say two?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve contingent on the servitude being the proper to meet code, the 60 feet.
I second that.
I have a motion by Sherri Lyman to approve with the condition that the proper servitude is placed on the platte, seconded by Beverly Baray. Any opposition? Motion is approved. Item number seven, public hearing to consider the following servitude revocation. 12 Oaks, fourth filing, part one, lot 113. Yes, sir.
Michael Royce, 12 Oaks Development Company. Just asking for revocation of that servitude on the lot in the subdivision. We have access to, originally, that servitude was put for access to a treatment plant, but we have a rear servitude, and we also have a servitude on the pipeline. And in the original platte, the servitude was marked to be revoked, but we're just getting around now to revoking it.
Commissioners, have any questions, comments?
Is there a home built on 113?
No.
It's Zillow Bacon Lot?
Yeah.
It's all bacon.
Any other comments, questions at this time? Hearing none. Open up the floor to public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward? Please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed. Questions, comments, recommendations?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve by Bob, seconded by Buddy. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item number eight, public hearing to consider the following private road requested be accepted into the parish maintenance system. Zelo Lane from Burt Allen Road to the end, I guess that's what that means, to end. Anybody going to come make the case? Very good.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity. Benny Johnson, Councilman for District 11. I'm talking with some of the staff just a few minutes ago. I understand there's some concerns with, my understanding was that the road does meet the criteria. I understand there's some concerns with that at this point in time. We'd like to see it put into the system. There's no plans to do any improvements to the roads or to that road. It will give the gentleman access to the northern end of this property and on the north side of Burt Allen Ditch. We'd just like for you to consider taking it in.
Thank you, Benny. Any questions, comments by commissioners?
Who do we ask, though? Is there an engineer here?
Well, Ricky DeArmond, you went and you inspected this, and I see you've got a note down here on the bottom pertaining to the no defined drainage on either side of the road.
Right.
Can you elaborate? I mean, as far as the rest...
I'll go back to, I'll go back to when we went and looked at it. You know, we got codes that they're supposed to meet to be taken in, and one of the stipulation is that it has to be taken into the parish maintenance system prior to 1993. This road was not accepted into the parish maintenance system. It's still listed as private. If you go down the road, since it didn't come in before '93, we got requirements now. It goes to a subdivision regulation, which states that it has to have a hard surface road, has to be 20 feet. If you look at the measurements, I think we 20 at the front, 14-foot at the back of the road. There's no defined drainage on either side of the road. There's a conditional 40-foot servitude in the package that if you accept it, the 40-foot is available. If you deny it, there's no 40-foot as of today, except unless you accept the road. So based on all the criteria that we looked at, the road wasn't, as far as the DPW director was concerned, he recommended denial based on it don't meet the requirements.
And I saw the letter from DPW. Now, whether the road is bid out for repair, whatever, or DPW handles it themselves, that is the entity that is in charge of maintaining the roads in this parish. And if they have a problem with a road being accepted into the maintenance system, I have to look at that. I have to look at that very seriously. Even the issue, the fact that they're coming, you have 20-foot in the front and 14 in the back, this application is coming to us to accept the whole thing. So I don't believe that even a partial acceptance is fair or right. Right now, the way this application stands, I can't support it. I've got to look at, look at DPW and their comments. It doesn't meet the criteria, and I can't support sending a recommendation to approve.
Well, and I have to wonder why it's only 40 feet? When we just turned down a...
Yeah, it's got to be 60 feet, yeah.
We just turned down a man with eight houses on his, and there's at least 16 trailers on this lot, on this road. I don't understand why it wouldn't have to be 60 feet.
Our legal opinion, if you go back to 1993, it states 40 feet, and that's what we've done a survey based on a legal opinion from the DA's office.
Okay, but then you said that you were considering it as a subdivision, right?
Well, if it wasn't taken in prior to '93, which stated 40-foot, it requires, you go back to subdivision regulation.
But this was 60.
Right.
And this wasn't taken in in '93, correct?
No. It's still listed as private.
And I guess in D, it says, this means that the roadway would have to be totally reconstructed to put in necessary drainage in place.
The way it is currently, though, if you're looking down the road from Burt Allen, on the left side, the road is right up against the utility poles. All that would have to be either relocate the utility poles, which would be major, or shift the road in the center of the 40-foot, and it'd be a total reconstruction.
Also, Mr. Compton, this is a trailer park, isn't it?
Yes.
Isn't this, that's private property. Why would we even consider accepting that into the parish road maintenance system?
All I can say, it was brought to us to look at the road and bring it to the committee. We do it for a lot of roads. I mean, if it's requested, it's something we go research, and we bring the facts to
And all we're doing is making a recommendation to the council. They'll have the final say.
Right. All right. Any other questions at this time? Like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this matter? Please come forward. No one wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed. Additional comments, questions?
I'm going to offer a motion to recommend denial based on the comments from DPW and pertaining to the fact that it doesn't meet the standards.
Motion by Michael to deny the request, seconded by Bob. Any opposition? Motion carries. This is a recommendation to the council to deny. Item number nine, public hearing to consider the following simple subdivisions of property with variance. Janet Michael, property lots A2A, A2B.
Good evening. Clint Quintmaw, representing WJ Quintmaw Surveyors, asks for planning commission approval on a simple partition with the variance, creating lot A2B and A2A out of A2. There was three comments. One was to indicate zoning. That change has been made on the platte. It was already made. The new zoning map came out in the period of review, and so I didn't have access to that. And so once I had access to the new zoning map, I went ahead and made the changes on the current platte. So those changes as far as zoning has been made. And there was item two and three. Item two, the right-of-way of the road was not considered in the area, so there was no, nothing to change. And then item number three, it says, per required dedication note, please revise lot A2A boundary lines to not include the section of Louisiana Highway 931 right-of-way, which includes the area. It is only right-of-way in the property line carries to the section line, not to the right-of-way of the road, unless the parish or state wants to come in and buy it.
All right. Thank you. Comments, questions by commissioners?
I don't have all those comments on my sheet.
I don't either.
Yeah. Ben, do you want to comment?
Those original, the other two comments were on our original response to Clint, and then we spoke with legal, and my comments were off-base, and so we took them out of there, and Clint didn't get the memo, so...
Thank you.
Tony, that was tough of you, buddy. I didn't go out and look at this piece of property. How many houses does that serve? Because I noticed it goes on past the Michelle property.
Yeah, they have a house on B and a house on C. And then actually, there's no house on A2A or A2B.
We saw four.
Four.
Four being serviced.
That's possible. I don't know. I went by the number of lots.
Right.
Per the regulation.
So with four lots being serviced, it should be 50 feet.
I don't know. Okay, let's go back to four lots, because I don't count four lots. I count one, A2B. I count B and I count C as being serviced. A2A has frontage.
A1.
A1 is not part of this partition.
A1 still being serviced by this road.
Is there residence on A1? Is there a driveway? Because I know that was brought up earlier.
I have notes here. I say, wait a minute. I've got four lots. I've just got my notes I'm going by. And on the front, I wrote four-plus lots, so...
Okay, because a minute ago, you were talking about driveways, and y'all were counting driveways. Now we're not counting driveways.
I know, but what is this?
Because A1 has frontage on 931.
This is somebody else's.
You know, we have, we have one back here, one here, and then this one, and then this one. So that would be four, yes. With the new lot that you're trying to create, that would be the fourth one.
So it's not A1.
Well, A1 does hit that road back in the back, but...
But it's not using it for access. It's lot C, lot B, lot A2A, and the new lot, A2B. So that's four.
If you count A2A, that has frontage of 147 feet.
One, two, three.
On 931.
I get five.
What have you got?
Where did you get the fifth one?
Well, what about this strip of land that's basically 100 feet wide by 870, 830 feet long?
What is it right here, though? Is that all part of this?
I mean, is that 147.2 feet? Is that all Kenneth Michael Road?
No, that's frontage on 931. 147.22.
But that's part of lot A2A.
Correct.
Yeah, you're right.
Don't feel bad I did this stuff.
You're right. I'm sorry, Vince.
Okay.
I think what you guys are attempting to do is something that we've talked about in the past, is you're applying a family partition standard to a simple division. And my staff recommendation is simply to say, let's get that servitude up to 50 feet, so if that road is ever accepted into the public maintenance system, we have enough right-of-way to build the correct road. The four lots, the five lots, the seven lots, that's irrelevant with a simple division. There's no standard in our code that adjusts, that reflects how wide the servitude is in a simple division. The staff recommendation is, let's make all simple divisions 50 feet, so when those roads do turn into public roads, we've got enough right-of-way.
And you're absolutely right. It's under family partitions.
We need to go to public hearing on this? We already do? Do we already do the public hearing?
We will. Have not done.
Any other questions, comments at this time? Hearing none. Like to open up the floor for public hearing? Anyone wishing to come forward? Please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed. Any other comments, questions at this time? Because we'll wait for Julio to come back. Let's step out a second.
Well, we need to go ahead and move on to get on to the rest of it. I'm going to offer a motion to approve contingent upon the private servitude of passage being widened to 50 feet.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Bobby?
Buddy?
Okay. Motion to approve with the condition that a 50-foot servitude be placed on the platte by Michael Marshawn, seconded by Buddy Wells. Any opposition?
Me.
Motion, you oppose?
Yeah.
Well, you can't oppose.
Because I want to address a problem with that, if I may, because you don't, you're not looking...
We have a motion and a second, and the votes...
Well, that's fine. You want to know the problem that's going to occur?
I don't, no, I don't see any problem.
Well, there's going to be a problem, because it's going to happen.
Alan, if I may, if I may, we have an appeals process. If you get with staff, they'll take you through that, and you can come back and appeal to the commission's decision.
I realize, I just, for y'all's knowledge, I want to explain the future problem that's going to happen in wiring this, is that the utility servitude is existing. Therefore, when you widen it to 50, the utility servitude is going to be within the 50-foot servitude.
Now, you can move it over, too.
So you're going to move the current utilities that's in there today? Sure.
Well, that's your opinion. We disagree with it. All right. All right. Item seven, excuse me, 9B. The Derek Meyer property, lots E4A and E4B.
James Fagou, representing Mr. Derek Meyer, on the following simple division with a variance. Mr. Derek Meyer is presently living on the north lot, and he wants to give the southern lot to his brother. I think there was a couple of comments about the servitude trying to see highlights, or we shaded in exactly what was being proposed. And we did that little turnaround that Mr. Julio likes to see.
Who named this road? I'm just curious. Is it really?
It was in my GPS.
I've got a question for you, James.
There's actually two spellings of it, too.
Have you seen the staff comments and recommendation?
They've changed a couple of times.
Well, we've got a staff recommendation here, same thing, 50-foot servitude.
50-foot? Okay, that won't be a problem.
It won't be a problem.
I wouldn't imagine so. They got plenty enough acreage. But now, all simple divisions are going to be 50, it's a 50-foot.
I'm not going to say that, because you know as well as I do, simple divisions can, you know, there's a lot that can happen with simple divisions. So I'm not going to tell you that that's going to become a standard.
Can I do away with the little T-turnaround then? With the 50-foot servitude?
Well, let's, I don't really feel comfortable with us trying to get in here and start engineering something now.
I would think 50 feet would be plenty for one residence for a servitude. I don't think we need to add any more. But whatever you, whatever you recommend.
I don't actually think he has to have a T-turnaround on this, in this situation.
Not but just one lot, wouldn't think.
Thank you.
I think I'll defer to staff. They're the professional engineers to make that decision. But I think, you know, the recommendation is you go to 50-foot right-of-way.
No problem.
Yeah. I'm just trying, I'm trying to understand the 50-foot right-of-way, how it's gonna be placed in there.
I kind of, I mean, I agree with Julio. I think we are, I'd like to hear from our engineer, you know, as far as what their thoughts are on this.
If we have a 50-foot servitude, the T-turnaround would not serve much purpose and would provide sufficient access to the back lot.
Well, while you're at it, let's talk about the 50-foot servitude. You got Didi Bob Lane.
You said Diddy Bob.
Diddy Bob.
Diddy Bob. Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. That's a tough one for humans. You got 20 feet on one side, and so what's gonna happen? It's gonna be 25 feet wide along lots E4A and E4B. Is that what you're expecting, staff?
They.
I mean, you know.
Only half of the road here.
I mean, you don't own, you don't own lot E3, do you?
No. Track 3, you mean?
Three, right.
No, track 3 is a separate owner. So the road stops pretty much at the beginning of track E, track 3.
All right, but what about, what about the piece to the west of the lane?
I mean, if you accept the road, you're gonna have a big turn in it.
But it's not his. We can't ask for anything on that property, so to plan for the future.
So what you're gonna give us, you're gonna, the 20-foot you're dedicating, you're gonna increase to 25 feet?
Right.
Yeah.
Is that what you're seeing, Ben? I mean, that, you're on.
Yeah, that's the most we can ask. I mean, they obviously can't affect the other side of the road, too.
All right. Just want to make sure.
Okay.
No problem. 25 feet.
So really, from the end of the lane, whatever the name is.
See it.
Diddy Bob.
Well, in my previous conversations with them, the right-of-way, the shaded part is beyond where the right-of-way was dedicated.
And here lies my point. My point is, is that from that, from the edge, from the north end of track 3 to lot E4B, we're gonna have a 25-foot road.
Right.
Correct. Well, half of, half of a 50-foot, but.
Right.
And you still feel comfortable with no T-turnaround?
The, I mean, we can have one that's accessing one lot.
I understand that.
The scoop must have come down there anyway.
And it's only half of a road that's accessing that one lot. And, you know, the 50-foot, if we're gonna be internally consistent with our previous recommendation.
But at the same time, Julio, if you look at it, I mean, you've got two lots right here. Both of them are two and a half acres apiece. So you should have the potential for more lots to go in. There may, there may come a time when the T-turnaround would have to come back, just right now. No.
I understand that question. Just want to make sure that we're still operating with a 25-foot road.
Yeah.
Just want.
Half. So what you're saying, you want it 50-foot from the shaded part?
I'm not saying that.
Well, is that what you're kind of thinking about?
Well, no, we're just talking, I just want to make it clear, we're talking about a 50-foot, 50-foot right-of-way. We're really dealing with a.
Half of it.
With a 25-foot right-of-way. Okay, that's all. I just want to make sure we all know what we're doing, that's all. You know? And on the other side, we're gonna have, you know, a 45-foot right-of-way.
And if they subdivide it, then they have to go to the other.
Haven't we required others to give the full right-of-way?
I think we have.
We can't, we, right now, we have this piece of property up in front of us, just this. And we can, and staff is recommended, to require the 50-foot right-of-way. Now, when those other properties come up, and eventually they probably will, at that point in time, if, you know, they do, that we can, we can deal with the 50-foot issue with those properties. Right now, we have a recommendation from staff to request that this right-of-way, instead of 40-foot, be 50-foot. Now, unless, unless, unless there's some other information out there that staff, anything else that staff wants to add.
I think what it comes down to is whether we want to do it clean today and require it to be 5-foot in addition, because we know we're not gonna build a road that does that weird jog. Or do we want to stick to our guns and say, let's make it 50. When the other guy comes in across the street, we'll do a servitude revocation of 5 feet and do that. I mean, it's a much messier process. I would be more in favor of just taking the 5 feet today. We're gonna do, deal with half of Diddy Bob. And then, when the other side comes in, we'll require them to get up to the 50 feet as well, or anybody closer to the existing crossroad. But, you know, it's sort of the difference of being clean and messy with this, and I would much rather be clean to avoid the whole having to revocate servitude later. I mean, it just.
But is that fair, Ricky? Because there's other people, we have made them put that on their road, knowing there's no, unless the whole road was taken in, it didn't make any sense, but we made them do it.
Well.
So we should be consistent.
It's up to you. Whatever you want to do.
No, you know, and, Mr. Compton, I mean, I just, you know, it's just looking at the staff report, it says 50-foot right-of-way, and a lot of good stuff, you know. And so I look at this, and I'm going, okay, we're only talking about, you know, collecting 5-foot right-of-way to hopefully better Didi Bob Lane, you know, over roughly 100 feet. And then, for the remaining 120 feet, we're talking about a 25-foot road. I just, you know, I don't have a problem with what you're saying. I actually agree with you. I just want to make sure that the record's clear, what we're doing, because, you know, Commissioner Solomon brings up a very good point. We've seen a number of these come before us, and we said, no. That lot needs to have a full right-of-way or some private servitude going to it. We've done that in the past, and I want to make sure that if, if this is the direction that we're gonna go in the future, that we're consistent in that direction, that's all. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, sir. I'm actually in agreement with you. It's just that I want to make sure that if, we're all aware of what we're doing, because it's a deviation from what we've done in the past.
But has it went, y'all did it in the past, and it always dead-end where, right down the middle of two properties like that?
Oh, yeah. We've done the dog leg, which is, not the best thing in all to do.
The southern track up here, track CG-1, goes all the way up to, I think it's Bayou RC's right there. So there's no further extension of this road farther than that.
Well, you said that today.
Unless they go straight to Bayou. But still, you're still not gonna dog-leg it.
Right. You said that today, but one day it might, you know?
Hundred years from now.
So. We don't have public hearings, sir.
No, no, no. I'm still debating this one. All right. And then, no other comments this time? Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward, please do so, and you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to comment? Public hearing is closed. All right. So what I'm seeing here is, for the first half of lot E4A, it's gonna, you already have 40 feet of right-of-way. So he's gonna add 10 feet to that lot for the half of it. Now you have 50 feet. Well, that's, I'm hearing old-school's of thought. But I mean, that would have the 50 feet based on you giving.
Yeah, it'd be 50-foot right-of-way on that side.
To that corner point right there, halfway through. And now, the question is going south from that point. Are you saying he should give 50 feet in totality on that lot?
So after the end of the, end of the road, 50 feet.
And that shaded area should be 50 feet. So he'll have to.
Anything.
Now he's showing 20. He'll go to 50.
Yeah, he should go to 50 feet.
Well, let me, let me be the devil's advocate for just a second. Suppose at the end, suppose Didi Bob Lane was 50-foot wide, right? And this gentleman wanted to have just a private, private driveway, private servitude of passage to the second lot from that road. He would only have to do a 20-foot one, right? He would only have to do 20 feet. And he's doing 25. So from practical perspective, he can do what he's proposing to do. I, you know.
If I was bringing it before as a family partition.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
So from a practical perspective, he can do what he's doing. It's just that, it just dawned on me, you know, when I looked at this, that, wait a minute. You know, we're gonna, we're about, you know, he can do that, but yet it's a deviation from what we've done in the past. And I think we, it's just a different way of looking at it, that's all. So I'm gonna take a shot at this. I'm gonna make a.
Sure, I understand it.
Make a motion here that we recommend, that we approve it, with the condition that the east half of Didi Bob Lane, along lot E4A, be a minimum of 25 feet wide. And extend into lot E4B, a minimum of 25 feet wide, a distance satisfactory to meet the necessary engineering for turnaround.
I second that.
Have a motion by Julio Dumas to, for approval, with the modification that the servitude be increased to 25 feet for the first, to the end of the road. Yeah. To the, all the way through lot E4A. Is that right?
Correct.
Great. And second, okay, right. And seconded by Bob Nance. Any opposition?
I'm opposed.
Okay.
I am also, I'm opposed. It should be consistent.
Okay, we got Sherry, Michael, and Beverly, opposition. All in favor? Julio, Steve, Bob, and Buddy. So, motion passes. Thank you. All right. Item 10, committee reports, subdivision ordinance committee.
We did not meet this, we did not meet last month. However, I did meet with Brian and bring him up to speed on what we're trying to do. And one of the things we're trying to do is to work on our simple division, where things like this, the lots being, the width of the road, the servitude, make it equal to the family partition, so we won't have this confusion anymore. So I did not have a chance to get with Brian and see how he's been, how he's come with that. Do you want to, do you have anything you want to add?
No, just as long as you give us the recommendation to go before the council for an ordinance. You know, we have a lot of the language drafted already.
Well, you have to bring that back to our committee. So if you have finished what I gave you, then we'll meet this month, the 31st, at 6:00 PM.
All right.
And we'll go over that.
All right. All right. Thank you, Sherry. Strategic planning? Ricky, anything from strategic glance? Both nay. All right. Item 11.
Motion.
We are adjourned.
That's a lot of excitement, man.